Item 10.2, which is a continuation of yesterday's budget hearing. And so Frank, if you could just maybe reset the conversation before I open it for public comment, just kind of recap where we started.
Yesterday, the commission continued the, to today, the public hearing portion of the adoption of the 2018 budget for Mason County. Again, I'll reiterate the RCWs that are relevant. RCW 36.40.060 requires the Board of County Commissioners to hold a public hearing on the 2018 preliminary budget to allow taxpayers to peer and be heard for or against any part of the budget. The public hearing also allows county departments to publicly testify if they so desire. Pursuant to RCW 3640.071 and Resolution 111-85, this hearing is to be held on the first Monday in December and can be continued for five days. Copies of the 2018 preliminary budget were made available to the public on November 20th, 2017, and a balanced budget must be adopted by December 31st, 2018. We have three options for recommendation. One is to move to close the public hearing component and consider the adoption of the 2018 budget on December 19th, 2017, at 9:30 a.m. Option two is to move to continue the public hearing due Wednesday, December 6th, at 9:30. And option three is to move to adopt the 2018 budget in the total amount of $96,000, sorry, $96,390,606. The current expense component is $36,966,203, and the other funds are $59,424,403.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I will open it back up for public comment on the 2018 budget. If you'd like to make additional comment, you can come forward and do so now.
Mr. Chair, there were questions yesterday that weren't answered, and I'm wondering if those are the answers today.
Ann, can you restate the questions?
The question on bank capacity and amplification and clarification on bank capacity, what that impact is to the roads fund. The question also on why the bank capacity backfill all needs to be done in one fell swoop and couldn't be done lowering the road tax increase. What the levy shift impact is on the city. And there was also a question on comparison of 2017 to 2018. Is there, is there a change in the bottom line total of the current expense?
Frank, can you address?
The bank capacity for roads is approximately $841,000 or $2,000. Roads was not considering to utilize that bank capacity in this year's levy. If the levy shift is used to shift the bank capacity from roads into current expense, those dollars will not impact roads. What will impact roads is the additional $500,000 in traffic diversion, because that is funding that would have gone to roads and will now be diverted to current expense. But the bank capacity itself will not impact roads, and roads had not intended to use that bank capacity this year. It still leaves that bank capacity available for roads in the future. The second part of your question, if I understood it, do you have to use all of the bank capacity at once? And the answer is no. So you can use any amount of the bank capacity up to the total amount of the bank capacity without impacting roads. And that would not benefit roads either, again, because they're not intending to use bank capacity this year. The next question was the impact to the city. If we do an $855,000 levy shift, the preliminary numbers, and the assessor hasn't finished their assessment, oh, I'm sorry, their assessed valuation, finalized their assessed valuations, so this number is somewhat fluid, but it's roughly about $75,000. And what that means, oh, let me, so the impact to the Metropolitan Park District. So the Metropolitan, the Shelton Metropolitan Park District would be prorated, and they would be impacted by the $75,000. No other component, again, as it stands now, within the city, county, and junior districts would be impacted, other than the Shelton Metropolitan Park District. It is the intent of the commission to make the Metropolitan Park District whole by buying down that impact. And we've had a draft, a draft MOU that was presented to the commission yesterday that will be presented to the city today to address that buydown. I think those were the questions.
And then the comparison of 2017 to 2018?
Um, and I didn't, I didn't have, I don't have those numbers here.
So I just, I looked on the website, the budget that was adopted for 2017, a year ago today, appears to be at $38,545,163 total.
Does that include the carried over ending fund balance?
Yes.
About $7 million, so you don't have that carried over.
No, that's beginning fund balance. The ending fund balance was about $4 million.
Three million, it had ending fund balance of $3,196,819.
But you brought in to 2017 about $7 million.
$7,300, $7,309,944.
That was the estimate.
Correct.
And then we had adjustment in mid-year also.
So the, so given those numbers, the proposed budget as it sits today is $36,966,000, of which $3,400,000 is ending fund balance.
And we had a, just a clarification, I think another part of the question we're asking on the, on the bank capacity. In the past, the commission had not taken the 1% in the road fund for many, many years. It came up with, and what happened is you took that 1% capacity and you banked it so that it could be used in futures, specifically hopefully something for the roads or whatever that would come up. It was 8.79% that was not used in the past. That was the 1%, is why 9.79 is almost 10% increase. It does not have to be taken all at one time. It could be taken 1% or not taken at all. But I think that was the part you were talking about, you were asking about the bank passing, what it was. That's exactly what that money was. And if, if we were to take it and utilize it, then it would not go to the road fund. So even though it was a road fund money, it wouldn't go to them this year. It would be taken out beforehand, before it even starts for them. In the future, they would get that tax increase forever, basically. Does that explain it a little bit clearer for the?
Commissioner Shute, can you read those numbers off for 2017?
Which, the total?
Yeah, the expenditure, or the total budget and then the ending fund balance.
So ending fund balance was projected to be $3,196,819.
Okay.
And the total was $38,545,163.
Give me just one second there.
You have the mid-year, one by chance?
Well, that's why we had to make the mid-year cuts because of where this was.
No, I know, but you have the number for the mid-years. Is that on the, I can't see.
This is the 2017 adopted budget.
So, so the adopted budget excluding ending fund balance, I'm sorry, What we have budgeted excluding ending fund balance is $33,551,207.
And we changed our budgeted, though, in July. How much did we change it down?
I have no idea. So that's a, that's a reduction of $2,797,137.
And we reduced our budget in July by 1.8 million.
1.8 and change, yes. 1.856, I believe.
The budget coming in is 1.8 less than?
Than what was, what you just said, yeah.
So when you, when you move the additional $500,000 out of roads into the traffic diversion, do you have assurance that that will clear any audit, that it really and truly will be used for road diversion, I mean for traffic policing? Because I read somewhere that there was a problem in one of our local counties that road diversion money had not been used appropriately. And I'm just wondering if you have assurance that by going from 1.5 million to 2 million, that we're still going to be all legal?
We do. And so the sheriff's office has to certify to the County Roads Administration Board and work in conjunction with our county engineer. One of the things that we've done in light of the increase in diversion this year is we're going through the process of putting together a memorandum of understanding and an agreement that would ensure that they can meet those, those dollar numbers. So they're currently going through the process of finalizing the memorandum of understanding. And a lot of that is in response to the issue that was had, I believe in Thurston County.
And I just want to reiterate that the, using the process they use now to allocate eligible functions to sheriff expenses of those road diversion funds, they, they calculated out the ability to, to go up to $2 million using those same allocations or the same formulas that have been approved in the past by the County Road Administration Board. So that's our assurances, that they're using the same formula. The formula has passed muster with the, the County Road Administration Board's very, very concerned that these monies not be misused as, as what happened to Thurston County. And they, using that same formula, they calculated out what the actual time and effort they could charge to those funds.
There is always a risk. There's just no way around it. Because you can certify it, and I'm sure they certified it in Thurston County as well. But for us, the one difference is, is they were warned that they had some issues that were going on, they were using it in a manner that may not. Even though they were certifying that it was good, it doesn't mean that it's accepted as such. And, you know, we have to be diligent to make sure that it stays within those parameters. But at this point, I don't know that we've ever had a warning from them in regards to how we spent it, at least up to this point.
Jerry, do you have any? Have you ever had any?
No.
Okay.
We haven't had any issues with it. We're meeting with the sheriff Thursday morning to go over the MOU.
Okay. Is that, do we answer them all? Okay. Thanks, Frank. Okay, with that, I would open up public comment, or continue public comment from yesterday's meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Tom Davis. I actually was hoping to get out of here, and I had no intention of speaking on this, but it's, it's important, at least to me, that when we talk about the budget and actually what Commissioner Drexler had said, that the funding for the Belfair sewer system is not, is not spread throughout the county, is just something I can't let go, because it's a little bit disingenuous. We have to remember that this was never the plan. This is making up for the mistake. The plan, and no, no commissioner sitting here was here at the time, but the plan was that the Belfair sewer system would be funded by the Belfair Fund. It was a separate fund. It was going to be a self-sustaining and it went completely off the rails, almost to double the expense. Now, that's fine, because we want to move forward from here, but you can't just, we have to remember history, or we're going to be doomed to mistake these, make these same mistakes. And I live in fear of making those same mistakes. If we don't learn the lessons, we've learned nothing. So the idea is that, yes, the county is incurring the cost, all of us are incurring the cost purely because the monies that are going to the Belfair sewer system to pay off for an ill-conceived plan cannot be used anywhere else. You could make an argument that, yes, we're going to all receive the benefits from this once we patch this all up and, and bring in the skia and so on, that it'll be generating funds that can be used throughout the county. But that was not the plan. The plan is now, is to patch up the mistake. And as long as we identify that it, that it wasn't the plan, then by all means, we should move forward. But it didn't start here, it started way back here. So I just want to acknowledge that, because there's, there's room for discussion.
If I can, I want to, I want to acknowledge it, just like you said, it wasn't the plan. But the truth of the matter is, the, the idea of trying to have the costs solely burdened on those individuals would close down the breadbasket that we just talked about. To take a QFC, for example, and increase their sewer bill from 40, what was it, $48,000, which is only $12,000 in, in Bremerton, for $148,000 up to $200,000, eventually you lose one of those, two stores. Eventually, you're going to lose a lot of the small businesses. Then you have to find the money to make up for that, because it's limited. We weren't here, but it was never the plan. But it is the best that we could find to do in order to keep that from bouncing and allowed to continue to grow.
No argument.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comment?
Brenda Hershey, Post Office Box 1936, Comilche Precinct. So I'm, I really don't understand now why you're on that original resolution from 28 November, that you were planning to do the entire amount of the bank capacity, the, you know, 8.79%. I don't understand, if the dollars are not needed in roads for 2018, why would you, in one fell swoop, add that entire amount to the tax bill for 2018? And I just ask that you give consideration to that, because from what, what I'm hearing today, Frank said it wasn't needed in roads for the 2018 year. So why, why go with that this year, for the next budget year?
Is that, you want?
Yeah.
Generally, this is testimony and not back and forth. Number one, the intention was, and I want to start off, and Frank misspoke to some extent earlier, when we were considering taking the bank capacity and doing a levy shift to shift it over to current expense expenses, that was with the understanding, the misunderstanding, we were told by our assessor's office that we could do that without impacting the city. And that's when I was considering it and looking at it very strongly. My intent, and all three of us don't think alike, so I can only speak for me, my intent at that time was to, after discussions with the sheriff's office and hearing the voters tell me, we want, we voted down a tax increase because we didn't know where it was going to go, and knowing very well that people want to have an exact use of, of the tax, that we could go out next year under the advisement, if so happened, of a Citizens Committee for a public safety criminal justice tax. The levy shift would be to offset the deep cuts that we're considering and that you saw in yesterday's hearing, the deep cuts, to offset and try to make whole current expense departments. And we had, had a projected allocation of $120,000 to the prosecutor's office, $200,000 to the Office of Public Defense, $65,000 to the Treasurer's Office, that added up to $855,000, plus $400,000 into our reserve to make sure that we didn't hit the cash flow problem we did last year. That's what we were looking at and playing with, I use that word, but playing with at the time that I personally didn't, was told that there wouldn't be a negative impact on the city as far as having to prorate. I knew there'd be a tax increase on citizens. And at the time, it was to be $26 per 100,000, I think was, was the number of assessed value. So the amount was to backfill current expense department budget cuts, except for the sheriff. The sheriff, we'd backfill as much as we could on the diversion. All of that was to be a one-time temporary, to see if we could potentially pass a criminal justice public safety tax. We have, we have a sales tax available to us and a property tax available. And as I said yesterday in our hearing, I would support that only under the understanding by everybody that it was to supplant the current expense portion that goes into criminal justice and public safety, so that we could make whole the other departments that are suffering cuts. And so why all of it was to do that one-time stopgap, under the impression, under the thought, in my opinion, or in my, my thoughts, that it wouldn't negatively impact the Metropolitan Park District or the city.
Yeah, sure.
This one, I wanted to clarify something. It wasn't, 8.79 was the bank capacity. The vote that I voted against was also an increase of another 1%,
Right.
which is the irregular amount yearly they can do. So that's 9.79% was the increase. And as was explained, I, I think I completely agree with it. It was being done in order to just rate it for one year to backfill some of the issues that we're, we're faced with. But again, it would continue you on forever. I'm not sure that I believe that the tax was turned down by the people because they didn't know where it was going. I know there were people that expressed that concern, but I'm not sure that that's the reason why it was turned down. You got a situation, if Commissioner Drexler's numbers are right, of $26 per 100,000 increase by doing that action, what is it, $84 per 100,000 with the new state thing that's occurring at the same time? At some point, again, you've got, you've got a critical mass breaking point for the public of what they can afford. But I, I agree with what you said, I just wanted to clarify, though, that it's 9.79.
My, my question's really very narrow. Why do, if the roads does not need this 800,000, then why increase it, the 8.79, for 2018? If, if there is an increase that's needed, do it in, in a step fashion, so much in 2018, 19, and 2020. So that's, that's just my, you know, based on what he, what Frank said, the roads did not have to have that money in 2018, then do it in, you know, in a less?
So because, because we're taking the bank capacity not for roads, we're doing it for current expense backfill.
Correct, I understand that.
And, you know, in our, I'm sorry, Frank's not going to say something.
Frank is eager behind you to make comments.
But I, let me just finish. In our long-term projection of the road fund, it was going to be in the red in 2020. So that money will eventually be accessed. Will it be the whole 9% that they'll need? Maybe not. But we also have major road building projects that are coming down the pike that will, will use that.
See, that's what, that's what's been missing.
Okay, okay. And that is the Belfair Connector. There's been a desire to, to complete and make whole the Razor Road as an alternate to Trails Road. And we could probably, and we have a lot of easement to purchase up in Allen because of an ancient law, 1910 law, we've lost a lot of the easement to be able to have internal circulation in the UGA of Allen.
So you don't need it in 2018, but you are going to need it in 2019 or 2020?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that's the part of the information that I think has not been available to the voter as to why you're doing that.
And that was what I was going to respond back to. So two things I wanted to clarify was, it's 11.3 cents that the impact is of that shift on current expense side from the road side for the levy shift, not the $26.
11.30.
Yeah, it's $11.30.
Per entire thousand?
Per 100,000. I believe the $26 is on the median household assessed value, because that would roughly come out to $26. And initially, when we did talk about the levy shift, you are correct, Commissioner Drexler, there was no impact to the city Metropolitan Park District or any of the junior districts. But then the city looked to resubmit their certification request, with the Metropolitan Park District taking a much higher percentage, which is then what ended up impacting the, the prorating, the Metropolitan Park District. And then I, your question in regards to that 855,000, and I wasn't sure if what your question was, why take the 855 this year and give it to the roads if they don't need it? Well, in a levy shift, that comes over to current expense. Okay, so that money, if it's not needed in roads, would be shifted and put over into current expense, and that's what the commission then used to what we refer to as backfills and the reductions that were proposed to each of the departments, and in a way that established the commission's priorities as to what they felt needed to be backfilled. So that was the only other addition that I would have added to that, is that those funds are coming out of roads, going to current expense, to be used in current expense. And roads has indicated that in 2019, 20, and/or 21, they may need those dollars, and it would be unavailable for current expense to shift in future years.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just, I would just comment, you know, I think part of the, part of the frustration is, you know, is we're having to evaluate this, this budget in a way that provides no good options. There are no good options here. And, you know, one of the things that I think it's important to keep in mind is we're trying to make the best of the bad choices. That's, that's where we are, I think, as a, as a county right now. When I look at this, I don't, I don't love the fact that we need to do a levy shift or that we're considering a levy shift. I think that's a, it's, it's disappointing that that's one of the options that we have to consider and probably, probably one of the options that we'll move forward. You know, but to do it otherwise is akin to, you know, maybe you've heard the term dine and dash. It's one thing to run the bill up and then not be able to pay for it. And unfortunately, you know, we're, we're here holding, holding the check. And we have to figure out how to hold this thing together here, bring the citizens in, get, get more engagement from the public, put together a plan that is long-term, that stabilizes Mason County's finances over a longer period of time. And unfortunately, that involves quite a bit of triage right now. It's a, budget hearings in the past have, you know, have, have gone in a similar way, where, you know, you had, you know, one commissioner saying, you know, this is, this is going to come back and bite you, this is outside of the, you know, the means of the county in order to put a budget together like this. And here we are. And here we are trying to make the best of that situation. And so, you know, I hope that we can continue to find ways to be part of the solution. Unfortunately, that does involve making some difficult choices. Any additional comment? Okay, seeing no, no others for public comment, I'll close the public comment period, and we'll move to our options. Frank, could you maybe restate what they are?
I am ready to.
Do you have those?
I'm ready.
Okay.
First of all, just one last.
I wanted to buy you some time to look for this. I wanted to buy you some time to look for them.
One last comment is that, as Frank stated, we, our only option by state law is to be able to continue this hearing day to day for a total of five days. And we have a lot more discussion, a lot more information to find out in order to be, for me to be comfortable passing a budget. So I don't have the ability to keep this public comment period open till our presumption of the 19th. And I just, and that breaks my heart. So my motion would indicate that. And you had a statement you wanted to make?
Just that the public comment aspect, but you can keep the public hearing open.
The hearing may be continued from day to day until continued, but not to exceed a total of five days.
Correct. So on December 19th, you would need to have a hearing to adopt the budget. There would still be public comment as related to the hearing, but this portion of the public comment, I'm sorry. This portion of the public comment as it relates to the adoption of a budget would, could be closed at any point in that five-day period.
So our only option is to keep this open day to day until Sunday.
Or close it and have an adopt, have a public hearing on the adoption, on the 19th, I'm sorry, to have a hearing, a public hearing on the 19th to adopt with a public comment period because it's a public hearing.
Another hearing, okay.
Correct.
Okay, okay, great. Then I feel better about that.
Me too.
So Mr. Chair, I move to close the public hearing and consider adoption of the 2018 budget on December 19th, 2017 at 9:30 AM with a new hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, can I see this one? Thanks. Okay, so we moved and seconded to close the public hearing and consider adoption of the 2018 budget on December 19th, 2017 at 9:30 AM. Any additional discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I want to just say, you know, when we wrote our budget last year, we were in control of our expenditures, but obviously, we were not in control of our revenues. We made some assumptions that came back to be incorrect. So again, it's not because of what we had set for, for our expenditures, but what had happened with revenue. Now, at the time when we were doing the numbers, nobody stood before us and said those numbers are wrong. It was the best guess, as all budgets are. And the numbers that did come back, some of them were self-inflicted. We have one department that decided they weren't going to do a specific thing anymore that cost us a lot of revenue coming in. We also had some things that were completely out of the county's control. But we do have an opportunity to make the strides for this year, knowing that this is a possibility and some of these, some of these revenues in certain areas could go down again. We, I think we should make some of the bigger cuts, as I think would be more prudent for our county, even though I don't like them, there's no way I do. I want to point out also on the diversion, that that money definitely affects the road department. I attended the, and I forgot to mention during the earlier part, but I attended Kitsap County's budget last night. And one of the things that was noticeable is their road diversion is around 9%. And we're looking at a road diversion of 20% of the tax. That's, that's quite a huge difference. And at some point, we need to keep control over that. And I would just, I'm putting that out there in just hopes that when we do meet to go over the budget again and for adoption of the budget, that you consider it would not be too late to change that and recertify, right? Because we're looking at recertification perhaps anyway. Because there was a mistake in the numbers that was put out in the first place and a part of, a mistake in the, in the numbers that were used in the motion. So we will have another opportunity to recertify. So this could change if you would just please consider it. Because I honestly believe that that tax increase on top of the other is a large amount for these people. And again, they had no idea it was even coming. I haven't been going out there beating the streets about it, but they have no idea it was even coming. And they spoke pretty loud to us. So I'm just going to ask you to please, when we meet again, to reconsider and look at maybe being, using a more conservative number for what we are going to expend according to what we can bring in without rating the road fund.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries.